Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Kingman City Council. It's a regular meeting on Tuesday, April 20th, 2021 at 5:00 p.m. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Present.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson is excused this evening. Councilmember Samley.
I'm here.
Councilmember Scott Staley. Councilmember Walker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Tony Henry of Kingman Nazarene Church. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time where we can come together as a community, where our leaders can represent and make decisions that will be in our best benefit. Father, we ask that your Spirit be with each one of them, that they would make the things here in Kingman be the best that they can be. Father, we ask you to be with all of our first responders, our police officers, firemen, our doctors and our nurses and our paramedics. Father, we ask you to be with our schools, our teachers, and all of those in the school district making decisions, Father. We want to be a community after your own heart, and it starts with meetings like this, Father. So we thank you for this privilege to be in a country where we can still have the freedoms to make our decisions that are best for our local communities. We thank you so much for all that you do for us, Father. It's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen. Thank you, Father.
Before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like to ask that we have an agenda modification. I've been informed that we need to take item J on the consent agenda off the agenda. Manager Foggan and the told me that the applicant and the city have discussed this, and they are all comfortable taking it off for tonight. So we'll remove item J. First order of business is called to the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance, or because this is a hybrid meeting, they could call in to participate and/or submit written comments. In any case, in all cases, items on the consent agenda will be limited to directing staff from, I'm sorry. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. And comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. And there will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group, and comments are limited to three minutes. Clerk Meredith, have we had any comments submitted or a telephone request?
Mayor, we have not received anybody registered to join us via Zoom on the call. We did not receive any written comments. We do have one participant in the audience that would like to address the council, and that is Jim Hammersley.
Please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Hammersley. Please give us your name and city of residence and...
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman Jim Hammersley, Kingman, Arizona. I would have been asked, and I do have questions about some items, and in future meetings would like you to address those. And the first one would be the COVID Care Act monies, past, present, and future. I know we've spent some money on the cart and great choice of getting that done and doing that for the citizens. What are the other monies that we've received, and where are we allocating that money? The other one is, topic would be the cyber attack. I know we came out with a press release today, but I know we were down for three or four weeks, and that reduced and really shut the city down and public safety down or first responders down. My concern is being a security guy for, in my past career, was any of the data compromised? Here at the city, you have an HR database, personal information, and social security number and all that, and as well as utility information. They've scanned driver's license and so on. So was any of that information compromised? And what are we going to do to secure that? And it would be great to set up a consortium made up of public and private sector to share ideas on how to protect systems and how to protect that. I know this is done in other communities around the state, and it'd be great to have a northern consortium of public and private sectors discussing that. But my concern is, you know, was the data compromised? In short, are they selling it on the dark web and stuff like that? Or am I going to have to worry about my identity and stuff like that? My wife's identity many years ago was compromised, and it was a pain to get that undone. And the other topic would be 911 PSAP centers. I know it was down for three to four hours a couple of weeks ago. It wasn't down just for Kingman, from what I understand. It was down at the sheriff's office. It was down for the region. The region included Kingman, the sheriff's, Mojave County, Bullhead, Havasu, Fort Mojave, and La Paz. And our carrier is frontier for our telecommunication that provide the 911 centers, the connectivity. But from what I understand, the root cause was some hardware over in the sheriff's office. But that shouldn't happen, shut down the entire region. It should be failover. So if Kingman went down, it would fail over to the sheriff's office, and we'd have dispatch people go over there. But you've got to have an IGA in place, an MOU in place, and consoles set up. I'm not sure if that's done. From my understanding, it's not, but it would be great if we did that. Last but least, the, that's it. I know it's three minutes. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Manager Foggan, so I think we had, well, heard three items, the COVID funding and the uses and what we've received and will receive. Cyber attacks, any compromised data and any information on that, and the 911 centers, and the consideration of a consortium. So if you could take that and return with information that addresses some of that. I know we had some out today, and that it is forthcoming as you are able to do.
Yeah, so the cyber attack is still under forensic evaluation. As soon as we have more information, that will, we will constantly update and release information on that. The 911 issue was down for an hour and a half. Our understanding is that the state is taking RFPs to make sure that that kind of activity for the provider cannot happen again. And we will, of course, be discussing CARES Act and federal funding distribution at our budget meetings.
Thank you so much. And I think from what you've said, that there is a concerted effort among agencies to address the cyber attack issues.
We really can't discuss this.
Yeah, that's, I was just...
Mr. Cooper, welcome back. Welcome back.
You don't want me here, but this is beyond the scope.
Well, good. We duly noted all of these issues. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed and considered separately. Would any of the council members like to remove a consent agenda item?
Madam Mayor, I would like to pull item I.
Item I. Okay, thank you. Any others? Vice Mayor, anyone? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda A through K, with the exception of I and J, of course.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Walker, I heard you make the motion, and Vice Mayor, the second. All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Let's look at item I, pavement preservation change request. Consideration and approval of a change request to the pavement preservation contract PH08566 to provide a type-two slurry on Stockton Hill Road from Gordon Avenue to Northern Avenue. Staff recommends approval. Councilmember Walker.
I was just wondering why the change in methods.
Manager Foggan.
I believe we have Jack Plonti on the Zoom. Jack, you want to take that question? You're muted, by the way.
Yeah, sorry. How about that now?
Great.
So, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item was added. Initially, we wanted to do a slurry, and we'd reduce the treatment in this section because of budgetary constraints. We had a project that we were anticipating for a large number of sign replacements pending a sign inventory project that we were working through with ADOT on a grant. They had some struggles completing that in time. That was actually recently completed, so we hadn't implemented any of that, those changeovers. And so we had some savings, and I rolled that money back into, or would like to roll that money back into our preservation side to do a little more robust treatment on Stockton Hill that'll improve rigibility and the lifecycle cost, the longevity for that treatment.
Thank you, Mr. Plonti.
Yeah, thank you. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
You have a motion, a second, to approve item I. All in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to old business, the ordinance number 1925, amending Article 6 of the Municipal Utilities Regulations for Sanitation User Rates and Fees. The city hired Will Dane Financial Services in December 2018 to perform a solid waste rate study, which was necessary to not only fund operational cost increases, but more importantly, vehicle replacements. After sharing with the council in May 2020, staff's recommended level of service, service level options, council requested that the solid waste program's customers be surveyed as to which service level option was preferred. The recommended increases to residential and commercial services were presented to the Municipal Utilities Commission on January 28th, 2021. After some discussion, the Municipal Utilities Commission voted unanimously to recommend the council the rates recommended by staff. The council adopted a notice of intent on February 16th, 2021, to hold a public meeting on April 20th, 2021, to increase sanitation rates for residential and commercial services. Staff recommends approval of ordinance number 1925 recommending, amending Article 6 of the Municipal Utilities Regulations for Sanitation User Rates and Fees. Manager Foggan.
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself from discussion on this item. And I would like to leave, go ahead and leave the room, and I'll go back into the law library while it's all being discussed, if that's all right.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And I will turn this form into...
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, thank you. So we have been working on these rates for quite some time, as you all will recall, and we've finally gotten, I think, to the finish line. And so what we have is Ms. Tina. I will turn the time over to her. She is the one that has been spearheading this with our consultant. So, Ms. Tina, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we have with us Kevin Burnett of Willden Financial Services, who will quickly review the presentation that was really shared with you at the last meeting in February, as this is the last stage of approving or adopting new rates for our sanitation service. At the end of the presentation, we would request that we adopt resolution, or I'm sorry, ordinance number 1925, to put those sanitation rates into effect at the beginning of the fiscal year on July 1st.
Thank you, Tina. Pull up the presentation here. All right, so hopefully everyone can see the presentation.
Yes, we have it. Thank you.
Perfect. Yeah, so as has already been discussed, we've been working on this project for a while now. So we took a look at some different options. We briefed the Municipal Utilities Commission. They provided a unanimous decision. We also gave you this presentation back at the notice of intent hearing. So as Tina said, we'll move pretty quickly through this. We wanted to just remind everyone that our revenue increase and a rate increase is different. So the financial plan that we've got put together tells us how much more revenue that we need to generate from the utility. But that's not necessarily going to mean that everybody's going to be impacted the same. So in other words, we could say we need 3% more revenue in the upcoming fiscal year, but that doesn't mean that all of our customers are going to be impacted by 3%. Depending upon what level of service they get, their impact may be larger or smaller than the 3%. So with that, we have a need to increase revenues because the sanitation costs are going up, solid waste costs are going up, just like everybody else's costs are. Water and sewer costs are going up, your home budget costs are going up. The solid waste revenue needs to go up to account for the increase in costs. As we touched on a little bit, there were different scenarios that were evaluated. The public was polled on this. A survey was taken to understand what their interests were, what was most important to them. So we came up with one recommendation, which I'll share with you in just a moment. And as part of that recommendation, we went and we took a deeper dive into the cost of service, so what it costs us to serve each of the different classes, what it costs us to provide the different levels of service. So the rates that we're going to be looking at in a moment are reflective of that cost of service, so that each class is paying their proportionate cost, and we don't have any cross-subsidization. So as we said, we looked at four different rate scenarios. This one at the top, option one, maintain the current level of service. That was staff's recommendation. That was our recommendation, and that's the recommendation that came out of the Municipal Utilities Commission. So with that financial plan, we are recommending a 2% increase in revenues the first year, a 3% the second year, followed by another 3%, a 3.5%, and a 3.5%. So again, this goes back to how much more revenue is needed by the utility. So in terms of the customers themselves, we're not proposing any increase to residential customers in the first year. So the current monthly bill is $19.78. We're proposing that that stay the same. It would increase by 3% the following year, and then the 3%, the 3.5%, and 3.5% in the outer years.
Kevin, can I just make a correction on that? Originally, we were going to implement those rates in fiscal year '21, if you recall.
Right.
And so those increases will go into effect for residential and fiscal year '22.
Okay. And then we've got the proposed commercial rate increases, where they've got a bigger bump that first year, and then the same rate increase impact in the outer years as the residential customers. So then the financial plan, so this is maintain our current level of service. So just again, another way of looking at things, we've got the same revenue increases and rate impacts as we saw in the previous slide. And then down at the bottom half of this slide here, that's what our target reserve is, the darker blue bar. And then the lighter blue bar is what your actual reserves are. So we're drawing down on the fund balance over time in combination with the proposed rate increases, so that by the time we get to 27, 28, we're very close in terms of what our reserve target should be based on best management practices and what the actual cash reserve is. One of the things that we didn't touch on at this point yet, but it has been in discussions in previous meetings, is the need to have the vehicle replacement program and making sure that we're maintaining and replacing our vehicles on a reasonable timeframe. So that's been incorporated into this, into this analysis. And then, so these are some sample rates themselves. So we've got the residential customer class across the top, what their proposed rates would be in the number of customers in that residential class. On the commercial side, we just took a very small sample of the overall rates. There's many more rates that apply to commercial because of the different levels of service, the number of bins, and the number of collections per week. So we wanted to give you an overview of what some of the commercial customers will see, but there's certainly many more than we have listed. And then at the bottom, we've got the residential extra trash, so what those rates would be going forward, and then the discontinuation of the commercial extra trash. We wanted to end off with a comparison to our neighbors. So it's always important to find out how we compare to our neighbors, but at the same time, it's important to remember that it's not going to be an exact apples-to-apples comparison. The size of our neighbors is going to be different than the size of Kingman, the proximity to landfill, who owns the landfill, et cetera, the customer base, the age of the fleet, how much money has been reinvested into the fleet. So those are things to take into account. So what we have here is we've identified some of your neighboring communities, whether or not it's private or public service, the current residential rate, and then some of the other offerings that they have, whether there's curbside recycling, drop-off recycling, once-a-week curbside, once-a-week without recycling. And then at the bottom, we've also got some of your local private haulers and how those rates compare to what the city is at and where we're proposing the city to go. So the next steps that we see pending approval by council would be to have the new rates go into effect July 1 at the beginning of the new fiscal year. And that's all I had for a formal presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try and address them.
Are there any questions regarding the presentation?
Madam Mayor, I have a question. The residential rate versus the commercial rate for the 90-gallon dumpster, it appears the residential is subsidizing the commercial. Because if you look at the rate, it's on slide 13? Or no? It looks to me like we're, the commercial is getting subsidized by the residential. For the same dumpster, commercial's getting it for $7.42 a month cheaper.
Well, that's a good question.
So shouldn't that be the same, if it's the same dumpster, same truck?
So, Councilman Walker, I can try to answer your question anyhow. So when we look, when we did our cost of service, it was important for us to look at the commercial service as a whole and ensure that our commercial users were not being subsidized by our residential users, which is what we did, and which is why there's almost a 40% increase across the board for all of the commercial customers. What we did not do is look at each category of commercial service. We have, goodness, I want to say 30 different services that we offer. And instead of looking at each type of service, we took all of the commercial users as a whole and evaluated them to ensure that the commercial users were not being subsidized for the residential, by the residential customers.
Okay, it just jumps out at you, because I mean, it's the same container two times a week, and residential's $19.78 a month, and the commercial is $12.36 a month. Same truck, same dumpster.
Director Mullein?
Yeah, I, again, we...
This gives an advantage to a very small business that's only getting one dumpster. Is that correct? But in total, you're looking at the whole commercial versus the whole residential, and they are at parity?
That is correct.
So that's...
So what I would add to that is the type of waste that goes in, residential waste versus what goes into commercial waste. And so in the weight of the cans, and what's in the cans is also part of that calculation. What was really important is that we knew, the past experience of the city was that residential was, in fact, subsidizing commercial. So in what we did in the study was, we basically separated those two out and said, okay, this is what it costs us to haul residential garbage, this is what it costs us to haul commercial garbage. And that 90-gallon can, as Tina said, we have a whole bunch of rates within the commercial. We made sure that every commercial grade was paying its way. It was found that those commercial 90-gallon roll-offs were going to cover, or at least cover the cost plus of picking them up. So there's a different weight, and what goes into those cans is significantly different. So that's why there's a fairly big difference. But it has been suggested that commercial appears to be, still being supplemented by or supported by residential. And we broke those apart and made sure that both the commercial and residential were paying their own way. So there is a difference in the 90-gallon can, recognizing there's different materials in those cans, but making sure that those cans that are picked up at those businesses are paying for themselves, plus the equipment replacement and all that goes with that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a question, really regarding this. The agenda states that we're holding a public meeting, but is this a public hearing?
No, it's a public meeting.
Public meeting. We already had the hearing on this item.
Okay. So we will not have that. So Councilmember Walker, I know, I think you're the liaison to Municipal Utilities?
I am.
And would you like to comment on their discussion?
They passed it. Everything looked good to them and passed it on to us.
So they approved, they agreed with the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Excellent. Any other comments or discussion? Well, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
And we'll just move on, and I think we're ready for a motion to approve ordinance number 1925, amending Article 6 of the Municipal Utilities Regulations for Sanitation User Fees and Rates. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Councilmember Mello. Is there a second?
I will second. Sorry.
Okay, was that Councilmember Samley?
Yes, thank you.
And we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1925. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. And I'd like to thank Director Mullein of Manager Foggan, and everybody on the team that worked for so many years on this study and getting the public input and really doing that type of analysis that you just mentioned, to get a fair rate for all of the residential and commercial, and especially so that we can replace our vehicles, which have long needed it. We have no, oh, we have our Vice Mayor back. Yay.
Thank you, Mayor.
And it did pass unanimously. We have no new business tonight, so we'll move to department reports. Fire Station 5 presentation. Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor. Several meetings ago, Counselor Scott Staley had asked for kind of an update on our plans for Fire Station 5, what it would cost, how we would fund it, really what would that project look like into the future. And so in an effort to kind of show you what that will look like, what funding considerations will be needed, both her and both Tina and Chief Rhodes have met and run through a scenario. So we have a short presentation for you on that. Tina, are you going to take that, or is Chief Rhodes on that?
I'm actually going to take the first part.
Okay, perfect.
So...
So, I apologize, I shared my screen before I shared me, but that's probably better anyway. So I want to give the first part of this, simply because we have a few new members of council. And then Tina, of course, will talk about funding. So when we talk about Station-
Jake?
Sorry to interrupt you. If you will click that button in the bottom right that looks like a projector screen, it'll give us full screen.
I would love. How about that? Do you see that okay?
You nailed it.
Perfect.
Okay. So when we look at this project, we're talking, we've been talking about this project for a few years, but this isn't slated until FY '26. We already have the land. It's 2.3 acres at Sunbelt Sports Park. That's at the east of the intersection of Arrowway Avenue and Prospector Street. So that's already there. In the past several years since I've been here, we talked about the community need analysis and everything that kind of goes into that East Bench area. And I've got a couple of slides. I'll talk about that. And that goes into our standard to cover and the area we're trying to cover, which I'll talk about. The project overview itself, if you look at 22B and 25, these are our different run districts. So this is where that station would be located, but you can kind of see what the East Bench actually encompasses in 22B and 225. That would be really the primary response area for that station. You can kind of see exactly where that would be located with Fire Station 5. So the need for that is very clear. We've talked about that. And with our annual report, we see the numbers are growing every year. In that Fire District 25, which is really the Rancho Santa Fe kind of area, we had 185 total calls there. Average response time is about 8:30. Ninety-nine percent of those calls are longer than 240 seconds. So that's quite a while. 240 is our benchmark for response. In that 22A, 195 calls, average response time of 9:07, 193 calls longer than 240 seconds. So what's happening in these two areas is you pull fire trucks out of the different areas. For instance, 22A will get Fire Station 22 there at the corner of Andy Devine and Harrison. That's our busiest fire district. So you're pulling, we're pulling a fire truck out, and we've kind of illustrated that need, which just, it's kind of a domino effect because the probability of calls in District 22 are quite high. So the same in Station 25, you get a rollover effect, and that's why the response times are so long. Kind of the overview of that area, oops, sorry, overview of that area, the fire station, this is what Parks has kind of laid out for that area that we'd be able to drive through the station. The initial thoughts on this station, when we start putting it together of our needs, three drive-through bays, the house apparatus, everything from fire trucks or hazmat trucks, those type of things, community meeting rooms, obviously, we don't have any out there, six sleeping rooms, just so you can grow into that station as that area expands and grows, both residentially and commercially. Satellite police station, this has always been a topic of discussion to have a place for them out there. I will have to charge them rent if we do that. Additional personnel, these are those other costs that kind of goes into that station, which is, to open a station, this isn't a remodel, this is adding a new station. So you've got to add personnel, PPE, uniforms, SCBA's, you can't shift these from another station. This is what you also, we also have to budget for. So the apparatus, a quint, this does get us a place to put our rescue and a squad inside. And of course, FFNE, anytime you open a new station, you have to equip the inside of that. I'll answer any questions once we're completely done, but I'll turn over the budget part to Tina.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, so as we talk about Fire Station 5, of course, we need to talk about the costs and then the funding sources that we've identified in order to pay for the station and the people. So we have looked at our one-time costs associated with the station as well as our recurring costs. And we know that we've got to construct the fire station and equip it, as well as purchase a quint. And so by 2026, we're expecting those costs to reach about $6.2 million. We also know that people are our most expensive asset, and so with personnel and the uniforms and the PPE that Chief explained in the previous slide, by 2026, we're expecting those costs to be $1.5 million per year. Now, I do want to point out that that $1.5 million per year includes those high PSPRS rates, but based on the direction we might be going forward, it might be less. And if that's the case, if we do end up paying that unfunded liability down, that annual cost will reduce to about $1.15 million at that point. So as far as the funding sources that we have identified for the fire station in fiscal year '26, we have a few different ones. We've identified possibly impact fees. We know that we'll need to issue some debt, or at this point, we think we'll need to issue debt. And then, of course, we'll need some sort of revenue source to pay down that debt service, and we've identified sales tax for that. And then we've also identified sales tax to pay for those annual recurring costs. Chief, next slide. So there are two different scenarios that we have come up with as far as funding the fire station's costs. And one assumes that the impact fees would be recommended, or I'm sorry, would be adopted as recommended today. So that would allow us to fund cash for a portion of the fire station and the quint. The rest, $5.09 million, would need to be financed. And then we would use additional, we would use sales tax to pay for our personnel, our uniforms, PPE, and the recurring debt service. We are anticipating that those sales tax revenues would come from the expected growth from the opening of the traffic interchange. And then a scenario two, that assumes that impact fees are not adopted at all. And so therefore, the one-time costs of the fire station and the apparatus would need to be funded solely with debt. And so that would be $6.2 million that we would finance, but our recurring personnel and debt service would still come from those same sources. Chief?
And that's really all we have, and we'll be glad to answer any questions, either about the project itself or the financing piece.
Thank you, Chief and Director Mullein. Councilmember Staley, I think you had asked for this presentation, and do you have any additional questions or comments?
I don't. I just want to thank you, Tina and Chief Rhodes, for the presentation. I think it's really important when we're talking about these impact fees to understand where they would be spent and that they will make a significant impact on our community.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Hey, Chief?
Yes, sir.
I just noticed on station features, and one of them is hose tower. I thought stations were moving away from hose towers. So can you clarify on that?
So, yes, and I apologize. That was an old slide because out there, since it is distance, one of the initial concepts, and believe me, even the three bays and the bedrooms, that's conceptual at this point. But out there, since it was a little remote, the initial concept was to put a little training area in hose tower. By hose tower, we really mean an area where we could go vertical with some of our training, even at that level. All conceptual, all conceptual. Even our architect drawings, we would have to go back and start from scratch whenever this project is realized.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, I would ask, given the remodel that you've just completed, have you gotten good ideas and learned concepts from that that would translate into this new facility?
I would honestly say that we've learned a few lessons, yes. And there's a few things that do transfer over nicely. The need for meeting space, obviously, is always a good feature. I think in our training room turned out very well. But just some of the flow and dynamics that we were able to work in with internal partners such as IT will definitely help us going forward on this project as well.
Excellent.
Mayor, I'm surprised to hear that the chief didn't say "just build new" all the time.
Just build new?
Yeah.
Remodels are always harder. That's what he learned. Anything else? Well, thank you so much, Chief Rhodes and Director Mullein, for that presentation. I think that will be information we carry with us as we move forward in budgeting in the years to come.
Thank you.
Actually, in this year, with respect to some of the discussions on fees. Our next report is called a downtown art presentation, and we're very fortunate to have Ms. Beth Ferry here to give us that report on behalf of Main Street.
Hi, I'm Beth Ferry, and I'm a volunteer with Kingman Main Street. And I think that in each of your packets, you probably have a little scenario about what we're proposing. This past year has been difficult for everybody, and it has been also very difficult for us as a downtown revitalization group. And we've stood by the businesses as they've exhibited such challenges. And so as things are looking brighter and we are ready to jump back in and start another public arts project, and so we wanted to kind of talk a little bit to you all about that project, because there is some need to work in collaboration with the city, of course. So this is kind of a twofold project. One piece is a public art piece, and we're looking at a life-size bronze statue. And we've thought about that, but then the second part helped us to determine what that life-size statue should look like. So what we're proposing is a life-size statue of Jim Hinckley. And the reason why we're working with Jim, or why we thought about that, is because Jim is, has such passion for the history of Kingman and throughout Route 66 particularly. And so we thought he has and does walking tours currently. So the second part is a walking tour that would be available via a QR code and that people would be able to use through their mobile devices as a self-guided walking tour. So the project is a, one, the public art, which is the bronze statue, and then the next piece is a walking tour that we would be able to provide to visitors and citizens of our community, free of charge. And that walking tour would be an audio that they would be able to start at the statue, and they'd be able to access through their mobile device. So that's sort of, in a nutshell, that piece. So with that said, as we're kind of working through that, we wanted to figure out where would that statue best be placed that could benefit the downtown area. And we talked with Josh and Sylvia to kind of talk about how do we get people from the powerhouse into the center of the downtown area. And so we took a walk around the downtown areas and such, and the train station just popped at us, and for a multitude of reasons. One is, it's got a beautiful area that a statue could be set up. And it's well-lit, and it would be in a highly visible place, so things probably wouldn't be necessarily in a position to be vandalized or things like that. Plus, our train station is a great historical building, and we would love to see more people spending time at the train station. And so that is our feeling about placement. And then the next part would be, from there, that's where people could start the tour. But then from there, there would be a multitude of tours that we could offer. And we listed about four as a sampling of that. So we're very excited about this. We think it's going to be, it would be a great asset to our downtown. But as Sylvia mentioned, and we thought this was just super great, she said, so many people come into our community, and they are really planning on spending just a few hours. And so when they say, what can we do if we have just a couple hours? She said, boy, if we had something like this, it would just really push people downtown, and it would give them just a little taste of Kingman. So that's where I'm at. We expect to be able to completely finance ourselves through our fundraising, so there would be no cost to the city, there would be no cost to people who utilize it, it'd be a free service. And we think that this would be a great way because people could also access this tour remotely. And so people could really see what Kingman's about before they ever set foot here, you know? So we're very excited about that piece as well. And boy, if we haven't learned this year what people can do remotely and how positive we can really make that. So it's in its very first stages. We're really kind of waiting for sort of a green light with you to say, yep, we think this is a good idea, and then we start the big work. Questions?
Wow, just wow.
I know. That's what we said too, wow.
That's a wonderful vision. I wanted to just mention these tours, or you could, because for people watching or listening, they're really creative types of tours. I like Picture Yourself Here Tour, Several Locations for Perfect Selfies, and Celebrity Tour, associated with celebrities and film locations, Route 66 Tour, Sites Made Famous on Route 66, and Historic Kingman, just highlighting our beautiful historic downtown. So creative, and I really appreciate all the thought and effort that's going into this. And Jim Hinckley, of course, is a renowned Route 66 storyteller and historian, so I can see that link to all of these walking tours.
And I have to tell you, if you aren't, if you don't know Jim, but if you do, you certainly know he's quite a humble person. And there was Paul Gaines, who is my partner in crime in kind of getting this done. We sort of had to provide this or present this to him in a unique way. And his first response was, is I think I'd feel a lot more comfortable if you simply waited till I was dead. And we said, okay, first of all, Jim, you and I are the same age, so let's just get that out of the way. And plus, we don't want to wait till that time. Oftentimes, we do wait, and so we don't want to do that. But just, these are just an example of some of the tours. But we were saying, oh, my gosh, at Halloween, we would do the ghost walk tour. At, you know, I mean, these could be constantly interchanging. And I don't know, you all probably are driving downtown and such, and you see people stopping at maybe a mural, and they're taking pictures and stuff. And we're envisioning, wow, if they're on that selfie tour and they're next to a mural or whatever, how wonderful if they were to take their phone and slide it against that QR code and then hear a little bit of history about that piece, you know? And that's all over our downtown. That kind of stuff is. It's like, oh, this is interesting. What's the background? What's the story? You know? And that's what we want to be able to provide, is the story behind these places. And so, yeah, so the big thing is, is it, would we, can we go forth and think about placing that statue within the realm of the train depot?
And this is a department report, so we don't formally vote here.
Make decisions.
But I'm interested in just having comments from the council, if that's something that you would like to do, or questions.
I like it. I think a downtown train station would be a great spot to start. And the tours, I think, they sound amazing, you know?
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Anyone else?
Mary.
Go ahead. Was that Councilmember Staley?
It was both Staley and Samley.
Go ahead, Councilmember Staley.
Well, of course, I love Jim Hinckley. I think that he is a great historian and a great supporter of all things Route 66 and Kingman. So I think this is a fantastic idea. It's a lot of work for Main Street to fundraise a project this big, but I know the group can do it, and I think it should go with the train station. This is a really exciting project.
Councilmember Mello?
I am very supportive. I love the idea, and please contact me when you're ready to do some work, and I'd love to help out. love to help out.
I love that, I love that. Thank you so much. I think, I think this is going to be, this is, we're all so very excited. We love being partners in this, and we anticipate about nine months to a year, and we would love to be able to do a, you know, unveiling during some big event, you know, whether it's Andy Devine Days or the Fun Run or something like that, that would bring a lot of people. And just as we're in the process right now of working with an artist, and the artist is an Arizona artist, so we're really excited about that. And so, we'll just keep you posted on how, how it's doing, and when we've got that bronze on the battlefield, we'll all carry it over to the train station.
Mayor, Counselor Samley had a comment.
Oh, please go ahead, Counselor Samley.
I just, I concur with what's been said. I do support this. I, I feel like there are so many people that are traveling through and just stop quickly, and if they had an opportunity to hear our history and through the voice of Jim Hinckley, I, I think that it would definitely give them cause to pause and maybe stay longer or maybe come back and plan to stay longer. So, I, I'm really excited about this, and I can't wait to take one of the tours.
Well, the really great thing about that is, is we wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any time constraints. You can take a tour anytime you want. That's what we thought would be so great is, 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 you know? Exactly, exactly. Your guide would be in your pocketbook.
So cool.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, great, okay. Well, we'll just keep you posted on that as we work through that.
Please do, and our best to everyone involved in this, seriously. It's a huge project for our community.
Mayor, just a, a few items to, to take note of. We, we feel like that the train station is a place where such a jumping-off point could happen. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that the train station and the area around the train station is controlled by the railroad, and just want to make sure that, that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's and placing, being able to place this where we want to place it. Will, will definitely need to be done as part of this project, which, which we'll be happy to, to take care of.
I know, but I thought if it's the museum, I thought the city owned that land, and we lease it.
So, there is some permissions we have to get.
Yeah, just, we don't own that, and I know Rob went through the hurdles years ago, but I think it's a sublease of a sublease of a sublease that has some, some conditions in it that may not be a problem, but we just have to look into it.
Right.
And, and obviously, dealing with the railroad is...
Okay, because I know we lease it. I've been, we've done this many...
We've never had a problem yet.
Right.
But we lease it to the museum group.
Yeah, we, sub, sub, sub to the museum.
Okay, well, please check that out, Mr. Cooper. And given that the railroad will work with us, which, since the facility there is already so, so nice, it's such a beautiful building and such a beautiful location, I would imagine they shouldn't mind a statue added to it.
So, do you think they'll mind if we ask them if they can send a train from here to Williams for entertainment?
I would love for you to ask that, please do.
Did you guys ask him that while you were asking him?
Yeah, let's, let's go for gold.
You can buy one, I'm sure, and lease the tracks.
Let's go for gold.
Throw that in. All right, thanks so much.
This is why you get everything done, thank you. No, that was, that was, that was such good news. That was a wonderful thing, is a wonderful thing. Next order of business, announcements by Mayor, Councilmember City Manager, limited to announcements, Board and Commission liaison reports, availability and attendance at conferences and seminars. Manager Foggan, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make or remind everybody that we have the Work Zone Awareness Week proclamation. That's happening April twenty-sixth. We're doing something a little bit more unique than just reading the proclamation in a council meeting. We're actually going to go to a work site and have the mayor read the proclamation, and that will be filmed and made available for people to listen and watch us doing that. So, that will be the twenty-sixth at ten AM. Just an invite, all of you should feel free to come. You now have a orange vest in which to participate, so please join us if you can. Just a reminder, Tri-City Council Meeting is tomorrow at eleven o'clock in Havasu. That is a hybrid meeting, so you're welcome to attend by Zoom or in person. And then, just one thing that I'm currently working on is scheduling a workshop. Counselor Walker had asked about pavement preservation. It seems better in a workshop than in a department report, so we're putting together a workshop that looks like it will be May tenth or eleventh, depending on scheduling of this room and everybody else's schedule as well. That will be an hour, it looks like it'll be an hour and a half, and we're preparing an agenda for that. So, just as a bookmark to all the things that we're trying to schedule, that's just another one to add. So, that's all my announcements, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
Nothing.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yesterday, the Municipal Airport Industrial Park Advisory Commission met, and just, actually, I know I saw Mr. Hussman was on earlier, I don't know if he's still there, Joe? Maybe not, but he gave a great update as far as the different things that are happening out at the industrial park, including, oh, it's the abatement, the contamination.
The draw site.
The draw, draw site, and gave an update on that, and they're hoping to have some kind of agreement in place by the fall to start working on that.
Oh, good.
He's hoping sooner, but the way things are going with federal government, probably not. So, but anyway, great commission. All those who are on that commission are very active and want to see the betterment of the industrial park and the airport, so it's great commission to be a liaison to. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilmember Mellow?
None at this time, Mayor.
Councilmember Samley?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Councilmember Staley?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
I just have a few things. One is, I attended the Arizona Town Hall, Mojave County Community, Creating Vibrant and Healthy Communities. And this was cosponsored by the City of Kingman and Lake Havasu and Bullhead, and there were forty-two participants, and so it was a really good and healthy dialogue, and it dealt with some wonderful, challenging questions, just three of them. But I, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but I will say that I think, based on the discussion, there's a big understanding of the assets that we have as a county and how fortunate we are to have many, many positive relationships and partnerships among our organizations, because one of the things that was very clear is the need to do cross-collaborative approaches to best utilize resources. So, kind of ties into what we were discussing tonight. And when that report does come out, I'll tell you, if you've never been a part of a town hall, it's an experience because they have recorders that synthesize what everyone says in real time. And then, so for three questions, our, what our group thought is all read back to us, and it wows you because we sound like we really know a lot. And you sit there and go, "How did they do that? How did they write and synthesize all that information into such a cogent response?" But when that is available, then I'll share it, and this city can share it, and I think we should publicly share it because it's really worth listening to those responses. And one of the key issues, and one that I hope we'll talk about as we go forward in budgeting, is the need for internet access and also economic resiliency. There's a lot behind that. But so, our thanks to Mayor Sheehy and Mayor Brady and all of their, and all the city, and to Manager Foggan, and to our, and to our Josh Noble for putting together, every city gave a little raffle prize, and ours was real, very nice and very well-received. And I think beyond that, I don't, there's one thing I would like to, I guess it's an announcement, I just want to bring this up because the timeline is pretty short. If you get information from the league, and I know you, obviously, you do manage, but their policy issues are upon us, and if we have policy issues for any of the five or six committees that they have, then it's time for us to have that discussion or for you to have that discussion with Manager Foggan, and so that it can be carried forth for consideration by the league as part of municipal policy statements. So, there's more about that on, I hope, everybody's email. So, that's all I have for this evening. And with that, we'll move on to requests for future reports and updates. Do we have any requests for? I'm not hearing any. Then, given that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.